Whereas the 16th of May 2012 is designated as Winona County Law Enforcement Memorial Day and is set aside as a day to honor all fallen law enforcement officers. Whereas the well-being of all citizens of Winona County in the United States is preserved and enhanced as a direct result of the vigilance and dedication of law enforcement personnel. Whereas more than 700,000 men and women at risk to their personal safety presently serve their fellow citizens as guardians of peace. And whereas more than 170 peace officers across this nation were killed in the line of duty during 2011. And whereas all Winona area law enforcement agencies use this day to honor our fallen fellow officers who have made the supreme sacrifice for the citizens of Winona County and the city of Winona. Whereas this day also serves as a reminder of the dangers faced currently serving law enforcement officers in their day-to-day activities. And whereas our officers do not serve in a vacuum but are assisted in many ways by the citizens of Winona and Winona County. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jerry Miller, do hereby call upon the citizens of Winona County and the city of Winona to join area law enforcement agencies in honoring our fallen officers on Winona County Law Enforcement Memorial Day in the city of Winona, Minnesota. Okay, then I got another letter here from a bunch of Girl Scouts that I better read. Thank you very much, Dear Council, City Council. Thank you very much for letting our Girl Scout troop tour the city hall for an energy audit. It was fun being able to see where you nice people work. We liked jumping into the rooms and turning the lights on. The blinds were cool because they let in some light but kept the sun out so it wouldn't get too hot. It was cool to be in the council chambers. We liked sitting in the council chairs and pretending we were the council. Troop 43215 recommends that city council should get a green roof. A green roof is a living roof with plants. In San Francisco, the California Academy of Sciences has a living roof that keeps the inside of the museum 10 degrees cooler than the normal roof. This would save money in the summer. I hope our council considers our recommendation and it's signed by all the Girl Scouts of Troop 43215. Get that?
Yes.
All right, then, yesterday George and I and a lot of other people were at the Legion to celebrate Harry Johnson's 100th birthday. And it was a very nice event. And he drives, he still drives every day, so that's something there. Then I got another, boy, I'm full of letters today. I got another interesting little note from a gentleman down in Tucson, Arizona. Mayor, City Hall, good morning. I hope this letter brightens your day. I was at an antique store here and found this old picture, picture card of your beautiful park and river area. How the card got to Arizona we'll never know. It's an old-time classic for sure. I thought to myself, my golly, I'll send it home where it will be appreciated. Our heritage is valuable to all of us. Lots of changes over the years, I'm sure. Enlarged it will make quite a display. And it will. It's a picture of the old Levy Park with the cannon and the old ridge and all that. Well, I gave $5 for it, so if you want to give it, if you want it for six or seven, or so, why not? Why, that's sure okay. Throw in a little postage if you want to. And my wife says if I hear from you, I'll have to take her to lunch. I'm 83 years old and still going strong. I like to call my little hobby a redistribution of happiness. Our world sure needs it, that's for sure. Thank you and Godspeed in your work. Have a wonderful and progressive year. Lowell, George, Tucson, Arizona. Very nice. I sent him a check for $10. So I'll see if we can't maybe get that. I don't know, there must, if there's pictures like that, but if we can't get it enlarged, I will. All right, now, I just want to make a comment. The following dates for City Council and I think the state offices also here in the city of Winona will open on the 22nd of May and will run till the 5th of June. And I'm announcing tonight that I will not seek reelection this coming year, so. You got anything, G?
Just one item, Mr. Mayor. The city was notified today that we have received a grant to proceed with the National Historical Register nomination for the Amtrak station. There were a little less than $500,000 requested and they only awarded 7,500, so we did well. 75,000, I'm sorry.
That's good.
So we'll proceed with that.
Okay, and I'll just jump on that a minute because I think it's important that we do proceed because, as you know, we are kind of in the running for if the rail ever changes where it gets a little faster and, you know, some more frequencies, that we're on the preferred list and the preferred line. And I think if we move ahead with this, that's a plus for the city of Winona, so we should do that. Okay, Monica Calloway, please.
Mayor Miller. Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Craig Alexander.
Here.
Zalyard.
Borzakowski.
Here.
White.
Here.
And we will move to the petitions, requests and communications. Item 3.1 is the 2012 Steamboat Days Agreement. And Paul Lundquist, the past president, is here if you have any questions or if you want to highlight the new activities.
All right, Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Council. We have some exciting new activities we're going to be doing this year. We have one thing that's called the Victorian Circus that should be very interesting. It includes, we haven't exactly figured out a name for it, but it's a guy that drives around in a motorcycle in a large ball, so we've just been calling it Cool. We also, there's going to be a high-wire act. It's going to be very, very interesting. So it's going to be a great addition to Steamboat Days. We're also adding a beanbag tournament down at the lake and in a continued effort to, you know, keep Steamboat Days fresh and interesting and exciting for the entire city. So, any questions?
Is a cannonball guy going to be there?
No.
No?
No cannonball guy.
No cannonball guy.
No.
Placed with the circus.
Yeah, he got replaced with the Cool motorcycle and the High Wire.
You know, I was watching, there was a commercial on TV about this new program, Something That Were Talent in America, and I saw, I wonder if that's him. They show somebody being shot out of a cannon.
He and his entire family have been doing that. Entire family of kids, I think his son and daughter are both doing different shows around the country, so the Cannonball Smith family. And, you know, there's a very good chance we might have him back again, but we thought we'd try the circus.
Okay.
Paul, would you share the dates with everybody?
It is going to be this year from the 13th until the 18th, and then, of course, the carnival does stick around the Monday after for the 19th.
In June.
Yep, in June, for Father's Day weekend.
Any other questions? Al, George, Michelle?
Nope.
Move to approve.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the request and second.
Okay, moved by Debbie, second by, what's?
Michelle.
Michelle, okay. Any questions or comments?
Just a comment. Thank you for putting this organization, putting this event on, and good luck and hope for good weather.
It's going to be gorgeous weather and I'd like to thank the city. I mean, everyone at the city does a fantastic job in helping us, and we couldn't do it without the city's help, so thank you very much.
You all do a good job, and I kind of relate back a few years ago when things weren't going the right way and group took over, and it seems like it gets better and better, so we appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you, sir.
You all in favor of the motion, which is to approve the Steamboat Days Agreement? Say aye. Aye, aye, those opposed? Karen.
Item 3.2 is a request for licenses for the 2012 Steamboat Days Festival. This is for the temporary on-sale 3.2% malt liquor licenses and the carnival license.
Move to approve the licenses?
Moved by George, second by Al. Questions or comments?
How come no strong beer?
Mayor and council, that is a city ordinance.
Oh, okay.
It's not my ordinance.
Yes, if there is any other questions, I'd be more than willing to answer them.
Can you bring your own?
Unfortunately, no, no. And we do provide security to make sure that all the orders and laws are kept intact within the beverage tent area.
You guys do a good job with them, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request for licenses for 2012 Steamboat Days? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, those opposed?
Item 3.3 is a request to transfer the liquor licenses for Cheaters Bar and Lounge, and the current owner is here, if you have questions for her. I would note that Mr. Moxous is also the liquor license holder on Zaza's Pizza.
Right.
I want to move approval of the transfer of the license.
Moved by George, second by Debbie. Questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request to transfer the liquor license? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, those opposed?
Item 3.4 is a request for temporary on-sale 3.2% malt liquor license for St. Mary's University's Homecoming on Saturday, June 23rd.
Move approval of the license?
Moved by Al, second by Michelle. Questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request by St. Mary's? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, those opposed?
Item 3.5 is the Light Up Lake Winona Proposal, and Carolyn Crawford and her team are here, if you have questions.
Why don't you give us a little scoop on it and then we'll see how we go, all right?
Okay. Excuse me. Council members, we come before you tonight to submit our proposal for the Light Up Lake Winona project that will require permission from you to use the Lake Park Boulevard from Huff Street to Franklin, and then we hope to expand to Hamilton in later years. We are also asking permission to install electricity at our expense during the summer months in the bandshell area, the Rose Garden area, and along the entrance by Huff Street to the Lake Lodge. We expect this project to begin relatively small and expand steadily each year. We will make every effort to not disrupt park activities during the installation. We would also like, excuse me, I'm sorry. We would also like to use the lodge to house Santa Claus when available and for our security crew to be based after hours when they are not making rounds. And we would like to use the bandshell for the carolers, weather permitting. The lights would burn from Thanksgiving until New Year's at our expense unless, of course, the city would like to donate some of the electricity. We could, the cars could exit on Main Street. The cars would enter on Huff Street to Franklin and then circle back, and they could exit on Main Street right after we have collected food and money for the charities. This way, people can also enjoy the lighting that the young professionals have been working to achieve. We have included signatures of businesses and clubs that will support us. We also have signatures of the Lake Park residents from Lake Park Boulevard and Main Street and the surrounding areas that have supported us. And we have signatures from other residents in Winona that would like to see this project go forward. The goal is to raise money for the less fortunate in Winona and the food shelf. The means is to beautify Lake Winona at holiday time with a tree lighting project, very much like La Crosse has done to beautify their riverside area. Our project will be on a much smaller scale at first with a vision to grow annually. It will include fun events for children and people of all ages. The immediate financial plan is to use the Winona Community Foundation. The benefits to Winona County will focus on helping the hungry of our city while at the same time bringing a special beauty to the Lake Park area at holiday time that will attract positive publicity for our area. This project will also bring businesses, organizations, professionals, churches, schools, and individuals of our community closer together in a mutual ecumenical effort and understanding that we have a basic obligation to contribute to the betterment of the less fortunate people in our city. We thank you for your consideration.
One thing I would ask is that you also contact the Veterans Park Committee and make sure that whatever you do, you work in conjunction with them.
Yes, we have contacted the Vets Park Committee. They have gone before their board, and Bruce Reed has given us their support of the project. We understand that everything that we must, that we plan to do must be run past the Vets Park and the city before being accomplished.
Questions? Debbie?
Thank you, Carolyn. My first question is, had your group considered at all the Levy Park? Because you talk about La Crosse, and of course, theirs is right along the Mississippi, along the Levy. And I know we've been for many years looking for other ancillary things to add to and, you know, spruce up the Levy area.
I would appreciate that, but I really think that our Lake Park is a beautiful area to enter and exit, and for the amount that we would like to see this grow to, I think that it needs the Lake Park area. And this will also beautify Winona from the highway, from visitors passing through, and when they see the lights, hopefully will bring it down and into the businesses.
And just a quick question as well to help me just get a better picture when you say Santa Claus. I'm trying to remember La Crosse, for example, and I can be wrong, obviously, but I don't recall them, let's say, having Santa Claus. Is this just all lights, or is this?
No, they do have a Santa Claus. They do have carolers also.
Okay.
I just think that it would, it's something to add. Parents bring their children, the children, and then they go through the park and hopefully give donations there also.
Sure, yeah. Well, I appreciate your effort on such a project and the creativity of the project. Thank you.
Okay, Al?
Yeah, Carolyn, you know, in our council agenda item, there's a series of bullet points that staff has suggested. Have you had a chance to look that over, and if so, what's your reaction to those bullet points? Is that something that you have no problem doing, or is it something that you would have some questions about?
Could you list off those bullet points? Because I don't believe that I have them.
Mayor and council, these I discussed with you, Carolyn.
Oh, yes, yes.
So I'll just read them for the public. It's the first year we, staff recommends that the lighting project be limited to the area of the circle around Lake Park, so this would be near the bandshell.
Past the Rose Garden and then back.
Right.
Main Street, okay.
And then we asked, recommend that she coordinate the efforts with the young professionals and their lighting project of Lake Lodge, and this year they're focusing on Main Street. The next one is the electrical service would need to be installed throughout this proposed area, and we recommend that proposals be received from electricians and Excel Energy presented to council prior to the installation, just so we're all in agreement of where it's going to be installed and what the costs are. License agreement should be drafted for the use of the park and the electrical service. The terms would include when they may begin installing the lights, when the lights would be removed, specific dates and times for the use of Lake Lodge, because that is a facility that we rent out to the public, and then also insurance for liability. We also noted that volunteers would not be considered city volunteers and that the city would have no funding for this project.
Yes, we have agreed, we verbally agreed with all of that.
Who's going to be our point person? Is it Maynard or Chad or, like, who? I think, I see everybody shaking.
Shaking their heads.
They should have one person that they're, you know, that you're dealing with, so, and then they would bring everything that would have to come to the council to the council.
Yes, and I understand, we need, it has to be approved where we place these outlets for maintenance.
Okay, so the city will decide who would, okay. Any other, George?
Yeah, first of all, Carolyn, thank you very much. As I say, this is, it's going to be a huge project in the future, and as many volunteers have come before us to make our community a better place, and that's what you're doing tonight. You know, I think you have a good group behind you there, and, you know, I think the project, no doubt, will be successful. And as we asked the city staff over there, no one was shaking their head. No, they were all kind of shaking their head, yes. So, like I say, I appreciate your time on this. As I say, I know it consumes a lot of time, so if we're so ready, I would make a motion to approve the staff recommendations and to direct staff to work with Mrs. Crawford developing. This proposal would now be in order.
Second.
Okay, moved by George, second by Debbie. Any other questions or comments? Michelle?
Have you talked to the Chamber Young Professionals about coordinating efforts?
Yes, yes, absolutely, and they were in complete support with us on it because we're not trying to take anything away from anyone. We're trying to add to it.
Well, it sounds like your goals are in different directions and would go well together anyway, since they're heading towards Levy Park.
Yes, and they had suggested we work together but keep our separate identities.
Sounds good. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the Light Up Winona project, proposal? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, those opposed? Very, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 3.6 is a request for the Winona International and Sprint Triathlon on June 9th and 10th. This is for the event known as the Trynona. And Dave Schutz is here, if you have questions.
Dave, tell us a little bit about this.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thanks for having me again for what's shaping up to be our biggest year ever, here in our fourth year for Trynona. So far, we've got about 900 signed up. We actually just closed registration officially yesterday, and that's for our adult event. And then we've also got our kids event on Saturday, June 9th, rapidly filling up, probably at about 200 kids. And then also, you would have seen references in the latest license agreement to a new event for the weekend, the Trynona Time Trial, which is a short but steep biking-specific event that heads from Sugarloaf Furniture Parking Lot up to the scenic lookout. So we've got about a couple dozen signed up for that event so far, and we're looking to have a couple dozen more.
Councilman Borzakowski asked me if there would be any room for one more to sign up.
I'm sure we could arrange something, yes.
I would move to approve the attached license agreement.
I'll second that.
Moved by Al, second by Debbie. Questions or comments? Al?
I have some questions. When the roads in Exhibit B that are listed as being closed at all access points, East-West Lake Boulevard, Clark's Lane, Huff, 43, Sugarloaf Road, and all of that, and I don't recall what you did last year when they were closed. I assume residential access will be preserved.
Yeah, we like to make it pretty clear that they are closed roads, and we staff them with volunteers and at some of the intersections, police as well, but typically, understanding the access points are limited to some of these neighborhoods, we do allow for local traffic.
Good. And then on page 12, under additional requests, are those similar to the requests you've made in past years, or are they new?
Yeah, the only real difference between this year's ask and previous year's is the addition of the Saturday event, which requires an additional closure of Carver Heights Road from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. And we recognize that this is, you know, a main artery in Winona, but we feel like, just like the Trynona event four years ago was poised to grow, we hope the same is true for this Time Trial event, which, again, this year will start with a couple dozen people, but hopefully, over time, kind of catch fire in this community and grow quite large.
With the number of people that are running by my house all the time, they sure are doing some early preparations for this event already.
Good, good to hear.
In shape and all set to go. In those additional requests as well, you're asking the city to clear weeds if they're present and also to test the water quality. Is that an expense that you're asking the city to pick up or something that the event itself covers?
I think typically Keith has just figured that out out of his own time.
I would suggest perhaps looking at, you know, some kind of adjustment, at least looking at the expense of doing that, making sure it's not an overly burdensome.
We'd be open to looking at that, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Debbie?
I just, Dave, I want to say thank you so much for this event. I remember when you first came to council, it was four years ago already, and it's just grown exponentially every year. One thought was, do you remember what you had signed, who, how many people you had signed up last year? As.
Yeah, the sequence of growth has been about 300 the first year to about 500.
Right.
And a sellout the second year. Last year, we raised the capacity to about 800 and sold out, and this year, we set the cap at 900. And so we're trying hard to kind of contain that growth to make sure that we have an understanding for what the sweet spot of the event is and we don't grow too big too fast, but, you know, with a month out, we're excited that there's still room, certainly, to grow in demand across the region.
Yeah, that's pretty, I know it's been, I think it was written up, wasn't it, in some magazine lately or something, or acknowledged at least, right?
Yeah, actually, there's a, there's about, I think, at last count, about 90 multisport events just in Minnesota. These include duathlons and triathlons, and for the second year in a row, the Minnesota Multisport Awards recognized Trynona as being the race of the year, back-to-back years. So, yeah, we're really proud of that distinction, and I think it's helped spur some of that growth.
Definitely, it's really incredible. Thank you for all the hard work, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
As we continue to grow, are you watching our logistics so we don't, you know, you want it to be a well-run event, and sometimes when you get too big, it gets to be a little bad.
Certainly, and that's been the main reason for that contained growth and really just going to that small adjustment from last year. One of the main concerns is our transition area, which takes up the entire parking lot in front of the bandshell, and this year, we're going to be looking at pretty close to capacity on that section. So in subsequent years, if we decide to grow this beyond our numbers this year, we'll have to look at either a split day or two days for this event, or perhaps relocating the transition area to behind the bandshell and using the staging area in front of it for some other activities. So there's ways we can probably continue to encourage that growth, but we're definitely sensitive to those logistics.
Michelle?
What's the website for your?
Yeah, the website is trynona.com, and despite the fact that we're sold out, we definitely want to encourage people to check out some charity slots, which will open up this week. For all those proceeds will go 100% towards our partner charity, the Maury Miller Foundation, and then we're also in desperate, desperate need of volunteers.
Thank you, that's why I asked.
Thank you, Michelle.
George, you can still help out 5:15 a.m. Come on down, we'll do it together.
So, yeah, we've got a number of, we've got a number of positions available for people to choose kind of what works best with their schedule and their skill set, and there's also some leadership positions available, as well within our organization. So people, if you have an interest in getting involved, we really, really encourage you to get on the website or email my wife, amanda@trynona.com.
I've done it for three years. It's one of the best volunteer things I've done. Absolutely love it. I recommend it to everyone looking for something to do on the day. And if you come at 5:15, you're done at 7:30, and you can enjoy the entire event. Highly recommend the 5:15 a.m. slot, just telling you.
And there's pulled pork sandwiches for everybody.
Al?
Just to comment that that weekend is a very busy weekend in the city with graduations and such going on. It's also the weekend when we'll have a ceremony that recognizes a gift of sakura or cherry trees to the city from our sister city, Massato, at 3 o'clock on Sunday, the 10th of June. Mention in there about that. All the good events and all a great weekend planned.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request for the Winona International Sprint Triathlon? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, those opposed?
Item 3.7, reappointments to the Fine Arts Commission of John Swanson and Greg Niedert, and I would note there is one vacancy on the commission. Move to approve the request.
Moved by Debbie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the appointments to the Fine Arts Commission? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, those opposed?
Item 3.8 is appointment to the Planning Commission of Wendy Davis.
Move to approve that appointment?
Moved by Al.
Second.
Second by Michelle. Questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, those opposed?
Item 3.9 is a request to close Johnson Street for a black party on Sunday, May 20th. Move to approve the request.
Moved by Michelle, second by George. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request to close Johnson Street? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Item 3.10 is a request by the Winona Swim Club for the use of the Aquatic Center for their event this summer, July 20th through the 22nd, and for next summer, July 19th through the 21st, 2013. Move approval of the request.
Moved by Debbie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Questions?
I just wish to note, I think the agenda says that they have the bid for this year, but they do not yet have the bid for 2013. I would assume then that permission would be rescinded should they not receive. And let's hope they do, but should it happen, then that would be automatic, I think.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request by the Winona Swim Club? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed.
Item 3.11 is to revise the date for street closure by the Awakening Coffee House. This would be on Saturday, June 2nd.
Move to approve their request.
Moved by George, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Debbie. Questions and comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the revised data for the street closure for the coffee shop? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed.
Item 3.12 is the Reach Request for Camping at Lake Park. This would be June 29th through July 3rd. They're also asking permission to place signs around the bike path when they are doing their walk.
Move to approve that request.
Moved by Al. Second by Michelle. Questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the Reach Request for Camping? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Under New Business, item 5.1 is the Director of Economic Development Vacancy.
Judy?
I'm requesting council that we fill the position that I recently left so that we can move ahead in the, with activities in the Community Development Office.
You want, oh, you want to, okay, you want to fill it, right?
Yes.
To approve the filling of the Director of Economic Development position.
Okay, moved by Debbie. Second by Michelle. Questions?
Is this something that would be filled in-house or would we be advertising for?
I intend to post it internally first to see who applies and then if there is nothing that comes up in that, that is appropriate, then we post it outside.
Okay. Al?
Could you explain the process then that this would go through?
Essentially, it will be posted in-house and announced to all city employees that the position is open. We will be taking letters of interest and resumes and hopefully interviewing people who do apply. And my hope is that we will have somebody who applies that would fill the position and I could offer the position to and fill it. If that doesn't happen, then we will have to look to further post it on an outside on some, somewhat of a larger search area.
Okay. Okay. Any other question? George?
When would you expect to have this position filled?
I'm looking to post it internally for the next week and then hopefully working on it the week after that. So it'll be something fairly quickly.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the motion? Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Oh, we do. Okay. All in favor of the motion, which is to have the city manager fill the Economic Development Vacancy? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed.
Item 5.2, the Terms and Conditions of Accepting the Airport Improvement Grants for 2012. This is an FAA agreement. Move to approve the request.
Moved by Debbie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by George. Questions?
So anything, Keith, you can tell us about it or what it all entailed, what it's all about?
No, we're not gonna go into every detail on this one, but it's a, it's a standard agreement that we have filled out on a regular basis. Being the federal government pays either 95, it used to be 95, now it's a 90% of all of our projects, or all the federal projects, we have to have certain agreements in place and that spells out very clearly what our requirements are to accept those grants, get those grants and do it properly. That's what this is. There's a number of minor changes that are in here, most of them don't apply to us. Things like some airports have a problem where planes are housed on private property and they're able to take them on and use them on the airport. This prohibits that. We don't have that issue, but that's one of these things that are in the agreement. There's just a number of things, talk about selling and buying property. This is a standard FAA agreement. We probably couldn't change it anyway, but we need to do this if we want to proceed with our project, which is proceeding.
Al? Reading the agreement that this is backed up by the 32 pages, it's kind of interesting. I found out that federal planes can land at our airport without charge. And if, if the federal government wants space on the airport for a building, they, they then would receive that space. But on the other hand, when it's 90% funded by the federal government, it sort of is a fair trade, I think.
That's actually, people, you know, ask us sometime, why does the federal government put this kind of money into these projects? And it is for those very things, so they can have the right to use the airport anytime they want to, anywhere in the country, for safety reasons and other reasons.
Right, security reasons, so forth.
Okay, any other questions? We all in favor of the motion, which is to approve the terms and conditions of accepting the airport improvement grants 2012. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Great.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
Okay, we'll start with George, you do that.
Okay, Mayor, it's been good working with you for.
We still gotta raise the volume.
It's been good working with you for the past 16 years, so, anyway. We ain't pushing you out too fast here. I'm sure many of us on council have heard that the disrepair at the Franklin Street Railroad Crossing is in. Whatever we can do to look at getting that repaired. As of now, with the stoplight there, of course, is picking up more and more traffic, which is good, getting some of it off of Sarnia Mankato. So there's something you want to say on that, Keith, or?
Yes, we've been definitely in contact with the Reboot on that and their intent is to make repairs on it this year, this, the spring. It won't be the rubber crossing that we'd like at this point, it'll be the asphalt repair. My understanding is there's a good chance that the rubber crossing may happen in the next couple of years, but the asphalt will get fixed this year.
And also while you're up there, Louisa Street Railroad Crossing also is beginning to get beat up down that way because it's a lot of truck traffic now, so.
We'll look at that one too.
Okay. Congratulations to three of my coworkers who have retired from the Peerless Chain Company, Larry Camaro, Dave Rupert, one of our umpires, he'll have more time to umpire now, and Lyndon Semling. Three great guys, three great coworkers, and they're gonna be missed, three good individuals. And I hope yous all have a healthy and happy retirement. And I don't know about Dave on the softball field, but he always said that was retirement, so. And also again, happy birthday, 100th birthday to Harry Johnson. And congratulations to Ron Gilleski on his induction into the Polish Hall of Fame. Thank you.
George? Debbie?
Thank you. I found, we just received, the city did receive the Playful City USA 2012 designation, so we had the 2011. I was just chatting, informing that we, they did qualify, we did qualify for the 2012 Playful City USA designation. Thank you for that, congratulations. Also, we, council got information emailed to us this week on Agamemnon Park. I, I did not know this, but I guess apparently this was a squatter site there for several years. But thanks, many thanks to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, they arranged, I guess, for nonprofit group called Living Lands and Water to clear and clean that up at no cost to the city, and we really, really appreciate that and thank you for that. The other, if we don't know, this is May, it's National Bike Month. And thanks again to Park Rec and several other organizations that helped to make what we have in celebration is Winona Rides. It's Saturday, May 19th, at 1:00 is the kickoff. And we've got Living Well that's Helping, the YMCA, St. Mary's, Winona State, and several other folks that are helping with that. So they have free bike and helmet rentals for that. And I'm, for me in particular, I know I had, well, this was years ago, over time, I kind of suggested, had the idea of, we have Winona Reads, and I said, well, what about Winona Rides? And I brought up a couple of times about a community free bike or share bike program. And all these folks with a lot of hard work and coming together are starting to make some of that happen, and I'm really excited about that. So it's Winona Rides, so and so get out there and, and you can do that and make, and they, like I said, it's free bikes and helmet rentals as well for that. I've had a, a citizen email me with a concern, I don't know if there's anything we can do about it, but just to bring to staff's attention. Going east on Frontenac, when they're turning left onto Louisa, I guess certain times of the day, there are truck trailers parked on the west side of Louisa. And the person feels that sometimes it's difficult at certain times of the day when there's more traffic on Louisa to pull out to see, to turn left. I did go by there a couple of times and when I saw the trailers parked there, they are behind the yellow line, you know, it's painted on the curb and the hydrant that's there and they're just north of, there's a driveway cut there in that vacant lot. So I'm assuming it's back far enough, I don't know if there's anything, just to bring it to staff's attention and I'm not sure whose trailers those are during the busy time there. Also with a great sadness for myself and I'm sure many others, I just learned today, just a bit ago, Gail Bradbury passed away. She's been, I've gotten to know her a bit over time. I know she had been battling cancer for a while and great person, wonderful commitment in so many volunteer areas in the community. I know League of Women Voters, as well the Great Dakota Gathering and Homecoming. And actually had just seen Gail on Saturday at a luncheon event. So I guess I'm very fortunate that way. So she'll be, she will be greatly missed for that, so I'm very sad to hear that. And condolences to all her family and friends as well.
Michelle?
Al? Thank you, Mayor. Last week, the city and the fire department and I think the mayor was there, I don't know, any other council members were there, we welcomed back to our community the Charlie Company from the National Guard Red Bulls, and that was a very nice event, well, well-coordinated, well-done and well-deserved and welcome home to them. And I don't know if people have noticed in the city, there's some new signs that are in some of our streets. The pedestrian crossing signs, according to our Public Works Director, Keith Nelson, have been placed for pedestrian safety and that's to be noticed and obeyed for pedestrian crossings. And I also have to compliment the city and the Park Rec Department for their bike and canoe program at Lake Park Lodge for use by any and all folks. A couple of weeks ago, my cousin was visiting and I had some time in the afternoon, he and his wife went down to the Lake Park Lodge and hopped on their bikes down there and rode around the bike path. It's a great program, take advantage of it. I'm sure people will more and more as the weather gets nicer to do that. Also, thanks again to President Judith Remaley. There was a reception today, Councilperson White was there, I know, and probably some other people on council were there. She, it's hard to believe she was here for seven years, but she is going on to return to Portland and other activities there. And she's been a great leader for Winona State and in our community as well. So thank you to President Remaley for that. And I also wish to congratulate all the graduates. Winona State was last week, this night in fact is Southeast Tech's graduation and the high school graduations are coming up. And congratulations to all of those in education who are moving on to the next step. And I concur with Councilperson Borzakowski about Franklin Street. I'm glad to hear there's some movement in those repairs coming up. Also, I'd suggest Main Street get a looking at as well, because that's in a similar shape or at least it will be to Franklin Street. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Just on those, you've mentioned those things we're putting up.
Yep.
Those certainly make you aware of pedestrians out there. That was a good idea. Okay, next.
The Consent Agenda, there are three items, approval of the minutes from April 16th and the 27th, the final adoption of an ordinance to amend the City Code Rental Housing Code, and the claim against the city by Nick Nook.
Move to approve the consent business?
Moved by Al, is there a second by George? All in favor of the consent, which is approval of minutes, one ordinance and one claim? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.